Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 17th meeting of the conference select board. Remind everybody that this is a broadcast and recorded. The first order of business this evening is consent agenda on which there are town and town warrants minutes from April 22nd and 27th. Tour guide license renewals, common vehicles renewal license for Anderson Hospital. Gift acceptance from Nolan Rogers of $3,000 for the bicycle fix-it station for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. Thanks very much for that generous gift. One day special license for the Salt Box Farm on July 20th from 6:00 to 9:30 at 40 Westford Road, Wine and Malt. Salt Box Farm on July 26th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at 40 Westford Road, Wine and Malt. Verrel Farm on July 24th, August 23rd and October 18th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at 11 Wheeler Road, Wine and Malt. Jim Jupler, August 10th from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at 11 Wheeler Road, Wine and Malt. Charles River Wheelman, September 15th, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at 11 Wheeler Road, Wine and Malt. And the Umbrella on June 27th from 6:30 to 8:30 at 40 Stowe Street.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have the town mayor report, Ms. Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Kate Hodges. I'm the deputy town manager and acting town manager. Extended office hours for the building inspection staff will be available during the hours on Tuesday until 8:00 p.m. Property owners will be able to review the street address files, discuss proposed construction plans, or ask questions. This is a pilot program, so if we see a lot of people being serviced during these hours, then we'll plan to continue. A coordination meeting was held at the skate fleece mounted unit facility to discuss the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail phase 2B design immediately adjacent to the horse barn on Weatherby Street in Acton. Representatives from GPI, Mass DOT, the state police, Town of Acton, and Concord attended the final plans for 2B, which is the bridge that's going to be over Route 2, are expected to be submitted at the end of June to the Mass DOT for bid. Also, a gift of the proposed Eagle Scout, which you would see in bicycle fix-station, will also be in the West Concord Village on that portion of the trail. GPI is also the consultant that we're using for the Drell property. And by the end of August, we are going to be moving to the construction document phase, and we'll have the final layout for that as well. As many of you probably know, the White Pond opening day was today, and as soon as staff got there, they noticed that we have the blue-green algae bacteria that's there, and so the pool, I'm sorry, the lake is closed right now. The pond is closed. DEP, Environmental Protection Agency, is coming in, and the Town Board of Health. We did send the sample out. It's going to take 48 hours to come back, but there's very little doubt that it isn't anything but the blue-green algae. And it actually happens to be not only in the beach area, but also along the shoreline on both sides and into the cove. The cove is actually really glowing green, and so it's one of the worst ones that there's been in recent history. So it's unfortunate, and we'll be working more towards that. And as you know, CMLP had rolled out their automated process, and so as of last week, 800 people had signed up for the Smart Pay online system, so it sounds like that is being taken advantage of by citizens. And that is all for now.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. I have no remarks this evening. So our next item is item number five, and I would call your executive item number six, because we certainly can, an existing license at Nano's Auto, Inc. on Main Street, has four, 25 cars. And what they're being asked us to do is to amend that license to reduce the number from 25 to 3, so that they can create what's called second chance cars and allocate two slots to that. Cars will be, as I understand it, are cars that would be made available to veterans or folks who are having a hard time, and would be kind of sold at cost, so it gives them the opportunity to do that. Did I get that right? So we'll take up item number five, which is amend the existing Class II used car dealer license. Are there any questions or comments or concerns about that? All right.
Just to comment that I think it's an excellent project. It's very good project.
So I would entertain a motion then.
I move to amend the Class II used car dealer license for Nano's Auto, Inc., located at 1211 Main Street. The amended license will allow for up to 23 used cars on the premises for sale.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those. Thank you. Now we're to item number six, which is the other part of this, which would create a license to have two cars available, at least name of second chance cars.
So I too think it sounds like a wonderful project, but I'd like to ask a couple of questions. So do you mind coming down to the mic? So if you'll just state your name and address.
Dan Holland, 31 Derby Street, Concord.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So I noticed in the narrative that you talked about providing cars for low-income veterans and returning citizens. So would you just, I think I know what you mean by that, but will you just define returning citizens?
Returning citizens is a, I guess, more polite way to define a person who's come out of prison, so define them not by their past, but like ex-con, but rather by what they are and could be. So, yeah, so the common denominator is low income and people who have a barrier, which is transportation, in order to break the cycle of poverty that they are currently in. And if you were to award the right car to the right person at the right time, at the right price, then you have the potential of breaking that cycle of poverty, and that's our intent.
Good. And then if you would just comment on, you talked about two different sets of cars. One was the award cars and...
The retail cars.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're hoping that good generous people will donate their cars to us, and that we will get two types of cars. One car that is inexpensive to own and maintain, and those would be cars that we would award to somebody who has little money to maintain and own a car. But then we'll get other cars that are more expensive to own and maintain, which aren't appropriate for low-income ownership. And those cars, we will sell retail in order to pay for the refurbishing of the award cars. So it's sort of two-pronged program, so to speak. The main program is the serving low-income people, but to subsidize it, we don't want to, you know, leave money on the table. So if somebody wants to award a car to us that's inappropriate for low-income use, we'll sell it. That's the retail car.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions?
Just, you're here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll show you.
I just had one. I saw in your paperwork that you've gotten, the state had already reviewed it and assumed you were going to be a 501(c)(3), but I didn't know if you'd heard from the federal government yet.
We're waiting, so it could be, they take their time, and you can't push them. You can try at least, but anyway, yeah. We just submitted it about a month ago, so, yes, we're pending.
There are no other questions, so entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Class II used car dealer license application of Second Chance Cars, Inc., located at 1211 Main Street. The new license will allow for up to two used cars on the premises for sale. Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's 7:10, so we moved, return to item number seven, Mr. White. And I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
That's so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So let me say, before we get into the presentation and discussion tonight, this application is to, at the select board, is to amend the liquor license, to remove a certain number of square feet from the liquor license at the Concord Market. And, Mr. White, I'm sure will explain exactly what's going on, but there is also a petition that is currently at the CBA that will allow the applications for them to conduct certain kinds of business in there. I give the application pending before the CBA. I don't believe it's appropriate for the select board to act until they've completed their work. So what we plan to do this evening is we'll have the public hearing, be able to hear the presentation, entertain any questions or concerns from the citizens, and then we will continue the public hearing until our July 1st meeting, which is after the ZBA is expected to act, I think on the 26th, I'm not in my calendar, so I'm more in that neck of the woods. So that's what we plan to do, and we will begin the discussion as soon as Mr. White explains, Clark will...
Thank you.
... We want some public...
I'm just here for more support.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim White. This is my daughter Elizabeth.
You're going to need to sit down.
Oh, so.
You're going to have to say your name.
Anyway, we own both Trails and Cafe and Concord Market, and are here tonight, as you indicated, seeking an amendment to our liquor license for Concord Market, which is a retail license to sell alcohol retail. I'm going to have to stand up, unfortunately. I've got these boards. You have, this is what I'm showing you, is what I just distributed.
That was the way to turn it, that other people can see.
Can people hear me?
But I don't think they can see this.
Not here, but here.
Now you guys can't see it.
All right, yeah, except I've got to really face the board with that.
We have it on.
Let's just try it this way for a second, if I can. These plans of a building, this is the first floor of the market. This is the second floor of the market over here, and this is just a picture of the market taken from the mezzanine. Before I explain the details of it, I'll just show you the space that we're talking about upstairs. You have these pictures in your packet. Some of you may have been upstairs in the mezzanine, but it's an open space. I'll look it up over the market, in which we hope to do catering and lectures and cooking and so forth, community events. It's a very attractive space, and people have expressed a great deal of interest in using it. We're here tonight really because of a quirk in the state liquor laws. We have a license to sell liquor at retail for the entire building. What we want to do upstairs is to serve liquor.
Beer and malt.
Alcohol at a dedicated event or an event where people are being served alcohol. The liquor laws prohibit you from serving alcohol liquor, alcohol.
Beer and malt.
I'll always bring your daughter to a meeting, so she can...
I'll clarify more in a second.
Yeah. The liquor laws prohibit you from serving liquor in a location which is licensed to sell. So in order for us to be able to serve liquor upstairs, we are asking that the board vote to amend their liquor license to remove the entire second floor from the liquor license, and also to remove, and this is a real quirk of Massachusetts law, the access to get you upstairs. So that is not a licensed area. Interestingly enough, this is what Edely does downtown. When you go through there, you've got all sorts of spaces, and some of them are subject to the license to sell, and some of them aren't. So we're asking that the board remove the entire second floor up here and the access downstairs. The red area is the area on the mezzanine that we're talking about. So that's really why we're here, is to remove that.
If I can clarify one thing.
Yes.
Elizabeth Akers-Moore, 86 Holdenwood Road, whoever. So, yeah, Andrew's taking notes. Just when you say to serve, it's really the ability to apply for a one-day special permit when there are special events, so it's not a blanket ability to serve upstairs.
Okay.
You need a retail...
No, no, we need a one-day, like the ones you just approved in the consent agenda for, yeah.
But you could also have a retail liquor license?
No, that's what we're asking. Technically, we have a retail liquor license to sell up there. It's part of our premises.
You have a bar.
It would just be the same events that Verrel and Salt Box, it's those kind of just cater. We'd have to come back before you, each time we'd have an event, so.
Okay.
Yes.
We will be without your ability to sell liquor on the second floor and the walkways downstairs. I do want to respond to the comment. We're here tonight for informational purposes, because the Board of Appeals is acting on a request to amend the special permit for the market to delete a condition relating to the second floor. I appreciate the board wanting to wait and see what the ZBA does. I guess I should say that even if the ZBA denies our request, we're going to come back and ask you to proceed, because I think the issues are not really directly related to each other. I believe that we have the right to do certain things on the second floor now for which the ability to serve liquor would be useful, community events or CSA events, something like that, related to the market. I'm hopeful if we work things out with the Board of Appeals, but if they don't, if I show up again and ask to proceed, they'll at least understand that I've said that before. So I think that really is what we're talking about, giving you a list of the proposed uses that we gave to the ZBA, showing them what we would like to do upstairs. And we're formally requesting that when the time comes, you vote to amend our liquor license to remove the entire second floor and this little area on the first floor.
Then if we should so act, then it goes to the state, correct?
Yes, I think it goes to, we've already discussed it with the state. That's how we came up with this thing.
Okay. Do any members of the board have questions for Mr. White? All right. Are there questions or comments from anybody in the audience? All right, seeing none, then what we will do is in a moment, I'll ask for a motion to continue the public hearing until July 1st, and we will have it on our agenda for that evening. In that evening, we will make a decision.
Thank you.
So unless there are any other comments, I would entertain, so we need to continue the public hearing. A motion to continue the public hearing until July 1st.
I move to continue the public hearing until July 1st.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All right. The RFP for, remember, next item is the, an update on the RFP 396, property lease license for installation of telecommunications facilities. Just as background, hard to remember that the authorized town just sent out an RFP in response to what we proceeded on need for additional telecommunications capability, and I'll ask then Kate to bring us up to the speaker.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we, we, the town, originally issued an RFP in February for two separate sites. They were not mutually exclusive. You could, the proposals were to propose something either on the Kaiser Road campus, near the Department of Planning and Land Management building, or the police fire station on Walden Street, or both. Those proposals were due March 29th, a few months ago, and what we had found is that there were a number of technical issues with that proposal that were brought up. We talked about it with council and decided that the bids were all going to be rejected, and the RFP was going to be canceled and reissued in a better fashion. The bids were rejected, letters were sent to the responders on April 24th, basically alerting them of that, and the RFP was subsequently reissued in May, and submissions for that were due June 7th by noon, and we received three proposals. One proposal was from U.S. Wireless Incorporated of Waltham, Mass. A second was from Wireless Edge of Rhineback, New York, and the third was from Sello Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless of Basking Ridge, New Jersey. So currently, the town team is reviewing the proposals. We plan to meet and discuss the merits of each of them in the upcoming week, and we plan to return to the select board, myself, or myself and another couple members of the team, in either July or August with possible recommendations. I can tell you that the site at Kaiser Road seems much more feasible, the site as it is and has been proposed at the Walden Street safety facility. We can't figure out a way that that would be a good benefit for the town, because any way that we put it, it ends up losing parking, it impacts the use and kind of flow of the building, and of course, the neighborhood. So at least initially, our initial thoughts are that we would likely not be looking at recommending having two sites.
Okay. And when you come back to the board in July or August, it will be with a recommendation or with a set of options? I'm just trying to understand a little bit.
So my thought would be to come back with a synopsis of the proposals and then give you what the team has thought is the best proposal. What we do with that, whether we move ahead to try to negotiate a lease agreement or not, would be up to discussion. But our job as the team is to say, this is a proposal that will be in the best interest of the town, or none of the proposals are in the best interest of the town.
And if we decided one of them was in the best interest of the town, we're thanking you for your hard work and authorizing you to enter into negotiations. Is that...
Correct. Correct. Because what will happen is that we need to have at least a tentative draft lease agreement before any wireless tower builder, any carrier, would want to go through the permitting process. It doesn't mean there's many clauses that'll be in any type of lease that would say that the lease is automatically canceled and null and void unless a permit is obtained. But the carriers will want to know, and those were, those are pretty standard language in all of the proposals that were received, that said that they wouldn't proceed ahead unless they knew that they had some tentative agreement with the town.
That's consistent with what we've heard previously.
Correct. Correct.
Other questions?
So what would the term of the lease be? Do we know yet? Is it like a one-year or a five-year, or can you help?
No, it's 25 years.
25 years.
In five-year increments.
Okay.
So it's a 25-year term. When we ask for price proposals, we had five, five-year terms. We ask for what the love sum would be, and then what that escalator, if any, would be between each subsequent five-year.
Okay.
So when you get the price proposals, you'll have the first five-year term, and then you have a total for 25 years. So it's substantial.
That's great. And who is on the team, the town team?
Joseph O'Connor, the chief of police, Tom Judge, who's our fire chief, Marsha Razmussen, our director of planning and land management, myself, and John Harris, who is our procurement and budget manager.
Thank you.
I saw a couple of hands, but before, I'm happy to entertain your questions, but we're not here tonight to debate the wisdom of this. So if you've got a question related to that...
Yes.
Okay, you can come up and tell us who you are, and tell us which question it is.
You can point it to me. I don't care.
I don't, it doesn't make any difference.
Please do.
He's up, he's first.
Hi, I'm Sheldon Hines, 74 The Valley Road. I have questions related to the RFP. When I appeared before the board in March, I believe, I pointed out that the, whatever proposals are made, whether they're from Verizon, AT&amp;T, whatever, that there is a strong possibility that the, that this would not be the last facility, that they would be requested in town by any of these carriers. So what I'm wondering is, as part of the RFP or the follow-up questions that you have, will there be discussion, questions of them, as to what their longer-term plans are for facilities required throughout Concord? As you know, the technology is changing, and there are new developments happening all the time, and 4G facilities are not the last word, and so we...
We have your letter.
Yeah, so that's, so we, so I just wanted to, my question has to do with, are you requiring long-term plans of the carriers to be submitted at this time? Or are, and in fact, are some of these applicants not, not carriers, but actually tower companies that would then want to find carriers to be on the...
Kate, could you address a question, whether the longer-term intent of any of these applicants was addressed in the RFP?
No.
Thank you. Diane? I'm going to show them, because I thought I could...
No, it's just fine. No, you're, absolutely lovely. Thank you. I was just wanting to make sure you knew I wasn't trying to forward an argument of any kind. Diane Proctor, 57th Suburban Road. Hi, Kate. My question is, if I, I just want to make clarifying. So what you're saying is you would like to kind of not put anything in Kaiser Road? Is that, was that what you meant?
No.
Okay.
It appears that anything that was, that from the proposals that we got, that it really wouldn't be in our best interest and the town's best interest to put anything at the Walden Street lot.
Walden Street lot. Thank you. I just didn't understand. Appreciate that clarification.
Hi, Melissa McBride, 25 Stowe Street. Just a couple of clarifications. So last I recall, when we met with HGC, it, there was no clarity around what they would allow. So if this is landing just there, has that been clarified in any way, or?
No.
Okay. And then the second question is, are they still going to be looking for something to kind of cover the high school, et cetera, area that I know they've been talking about?
Well, is the "they" Verizon?
Verizon, yeah.
I, I'm not sure. They're, depending on the height that is allowed at the Kaiser Road campus, the taller that is allowed, the less necessary the high school facility will be. The other two respondents were developers, and so they didn't speak to sort of what they were looking for as far as long-term, and they had several different variations where they would say, you know, we have one carrier or four carriers type of thing. They proposed just a single co-locator pole, and it was at the standard, you know, 80 feet, but then said that that would be subject to, you know, the terms of the permit. But they didn't talk about whether, they're not carrier-specific. So the only one that I know... So, the only one that I know that is carrier-specific is Sello, because they represent Verizon, and Verizon has said there's a need. To the best of my knowledge, the other carriers right now feel like they're pretty well-covered.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Right. So, stay tuned, we'll be back with this. So, the next item on our agenda is the update on White Pond.
Point of order, sir?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I have a comment.
Is it a question? We're not debating the issue tonight, so we're entertaining questions about what Ms. Hodges just reported.
Um, sure.
Alicia Boyagen, 33, Stowe Street. Hi. I just had a question about the potential of other sites being looked at in the future, including the landfill as an alternative to the second site identified at the police station.
Sure. I don't think the town is closed off to any other potential sites. We were specific in the RFP to identify, these are the two locations that the town could be interested in putting something on. My understanding is that the landfill was visited some time ago.
Yes.
And in particular for Verizon and Sprint, though, that doesn't fit into where their gaps in coverage are right now.
Okay.
Because they have coverage at Emerson, and so they, their coverage maps are suitable.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that they won't be suitable in five years.
Right.
I don't know. But I think that any, any time we're moving forward, if there's some town-owned property that the select board would offer as a town manager or, you know, my office, to issue an RFP, and then it's up to the carriers whether they figure that it's advantageous for them or not.
Okay.
But that's not part of this update?
Not this one, because that is in a site right now that we believe that we need coverage.
Okay.
It doesn't help our downtown situation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is update on White Pond, gift operations. Do we have folks here from, please come up. That's a good way to start the discussion, though. We got show up today.
Sorry about that.
But thank you for the help.
Carmen Jacquet, 38, Shore Drive. Chip, oh, let's see. Carmen Jacquet, 38, Shore Drive, Chair of White Pond Advisory Committee. I will tell you that at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock this morning, that water was clear, and then my husband said, "Have you seen the pond?" And I looked out, and there's that bloom. We got a bottle grab, you know, from there, and I made a, I didn't have time to process, but I made a slide right away. The cyanobacteria was walled wall on the slide, just really full. It's Delecia Spheraum, and that's one of the three we've always seen for the five years I've tested for the EPA cyanobacteria program, and that is the one we typically see in the spring. They, I then rode the pond to see what the rest looked like. So, there's very dispersed bloom all down the sides of the pond and across the bottom. A couple places at White Pond, at the Dover Beach and at 48 Shore Drive, there was more of a smell. And at the very end towards Sejim's Cove, there were some more strings than just this wide, like dispersed. And I can't, I can't tell you why it was. I could tell you in 2017, there were 17 blooms, algae blooms, but the pond would be closed maybe an hour or two, and they were right across the beach. But the thing is, the prevailing wind is west to east, so it's Sejim's Cove to the beach. Cyanobacteria are always in the pond, and it's just when they get a bit more nourishment and they proliferate that you get a bloom. But that wind, and also White Pond, though it's a kettle pond, it has an interior flow, which is from the Sejim's Cove end to the beach end and into the Sudbury River. So, unfortunately, it gets pushed when it's just hanging in the water column and collects at the beach. And those are quick blooms. You know, they'll disappear in an hour. It's unfortunate that this bloom has lasted all day, and that's not a great sign. And all I can tell you is, this is the third week I tested. I usually test on the weekend. And the other two weekends, my fluometer readings were like .10 for phytocyanines and maybe .20 for chlorophyll. Those are very, very low readings. I mean, when you get a bloom, you get thousands in, you know, in high hundreds. So, this was quick, and I can't tell you why.
And on the ocean, how long?
No, it's, it's, to see it dispersed through, all around the pond is not good. But, you know, the, the pond has, you know, it's deteriorated, but things are coming along. You know, the erosion control job that ESS did, I was at a couple conferences where ESS used White Pond as the example of shore erosion not being good for the pond, and, you know, natural resources in ESS, they've done a great job, and that's going to help. And I met with Jack Shepherd in April. He's head of Wildlife and Game, and he was right in the middle of working on the land merger agreement with Delia, and he told me about that. The boat launch is the biggest polluter, it always has been, of the pond. When ESS did readings of phosphorus going around the pond, the highest reading was right at the boat launch. Even at the beach, it was some numbers lower. So, that the town and the state, you know, they can get funds together, and Jack Shepherd said, "We've seen this situation of a steep incline before. We do a slight crown, we make swales going out, then you plant the swales as rain gardens." But without this agreement with the town, the state can only touch the blacktop part, and the agreement with the town, they can do a full job. And he said, "Bigger drains, you need bigger drains at the bottom." And also, we're, White Pond Committee is going to meet with John Sheehan. He's the head of the fish stocking program, because we think there is a problem with the fish stocking. I-
Too many, is here?
No, the selection. I brought you copies of a charting that Dr. Bill Walker has done, you see it, I'm sorry. It covers from '97 to 2017, and it gives a color to the different fish that they stock. They do rainbow trout, eastern trout, brown trout, and tiger trout. But you'll see by the red, the overwhelming one is rainbow trout. Rainbow trout is a western fish, it's not native.
Yeah.
Rainbow, you know, it's because the state just lists White Pond as a premier destination for rainbow trout fishing, and that's just totally, you know, what? They don't have to do that. You know, and there's writings, EPA Clean, the Clean Water Federal Act says, "If a body of water has algae blooms, rainbow trout should not even be stocked." So, you know, we're going to talk to John Sheehan about that, because rainbow trout also, when they're small, they eat zooplankton. Zooplankton are the enemy of cyanobacteria. They eat it. So, you want a good soup population. So, rainbow trout eat it when they're small, then they eat small fish. If they don't have enough, enough small fish, they'll go back to eating zooplankton, and sometimes they just eat it because they want it. Whereas brown trout never eat soups. So, we think that, and Jack Shepherd said, you know, "They have so much on their plate, they probably don't know the current conditions on White Pond." So, that's why we're going to meet with them, but we really think the selection, not stopping it, but just the selection should change. Rainbow trout just might not be appropriate.
Is there any support, is there any support you want that?
Oh, I hope so, yes. Yes, we will. But I think, you know, I think things are going to get better at the pond, that the town now has such a stake in the pond, I'm sure that things will go along. And also, I want to put a word in for the high school and the middle school. Bill Walker's group are in their 60s. I just turned 70. We need some young blood, and the high schoolers, this could be a wonderful program for them. Rivers are revolution, or whatever. This is their hometown. Concord has so many bodies of water. This is, it's really an interesting scientific chemistry process to do.
I'm trying to focus on the audio.
I know. I mean, I saw that here. And a limnologist that I've worked with for a couple of years, and because White Pond's been part of her studies, she has a program that two schools in Lawrence run on this. It's, they use it with the middle school. She gives the whole kit. It's like a couple hundred dollars for this kit, and the kids go and collect it, and they do the processing. And this town, I mean, they do so many great things. Why wouldn't they do this? Okay, well, that's our, that's part of our suggestions. So, I think the fish stocking is, and I know that the town has considered about alum treatments, and in, two people I've spoken to who have the same business as ESS, they say that really all you need to do with an alum treatment would be the three deep pits, because they go inoxic in the summer, and when the water next to the sediment, now, Concord has high iron content in water, so that sediment has a lot of iron in it. And if the water next to it has no oxygen, it leaches, and then you get the phosphorus. It changes, I forget, another form of iron, and it's phosphorus. So, if you seal those two things, you won't get the leaching from the sediment, and that could be a really big help. So, it's not like you're doing the whole pond area, and ESS does that all the time.
Thank you.
Any questions more?
No, I think the, well, the question I don't, you know, need to respond to tonight, but I think the board would also want to continue to hear from the group as we begin operations there as the town, you know, your thoughts on-
Yes, we handed in our recommendations in February, but, you know, as I looked at them today, I thought, you know, we can update this and make it a little bit better, you know?
Well, my hope is that you will just continue to participate in the-
Oh, yeah.
Great job, and been very important to the town and resource, and I hope that just will continue as we move from White Pond to the town.
We'll be glad to, and I always send my logs to Susan Rask and Delia, always from my weekly settings, but get us some young blood.
Thank you very much, I greatly appreciate it. So, next item is update on long-range planning initiatives. This I just put on there as sort of a setting the stage for a couple of items that are coming next on the agenda. So, what the select board has been doing is trying to unbundle and set priorities coming out of the envisioned Concord long-range plan. And as we did that, we converted, we converted our thinking into set priorities for some of the major components of the long-range plan. And our next step there was to then take these priorities, especially the high ones, and convert them into action plans, so that we actually began to implement some of the recommendations in the long-range plan. And tonight, we are going to hear about one of those, which was a town-wide capital planning initiative. And after, and then the second one that we're going to be picking up next, at our next meeting on July 1st, is the one that we sort of nicknamed Business Vitality. And we've invited a number of folks to join us here tonight for this discussion on capital planning, and we have invited the Superintendent of National Park, a representative from the Business Partnership, and we'll be reaching out to other groups that would have a state broadly and Business Vitality. And just for your interest, Business Vitality includes the more traditional economic development. It includes sort of the sustainability of retail districts in town, the depot, the main counter of West Concord, and that also includes tourism. And so, bundling all of those together is a nickname we've got for this Business Vitality. And that will be the subject of our discussion two weeks from now, with the same intent that we have tonight, and that is after our discussion on long-range capital planning, to figure out exactly how to move forward on this to get the job done. So, and what we have done for tonight is I've invited the Superintendent of Schools, the Finance Director, and of course, Kate is already here, to talk to us about how the town and the schools actually do this, and for them then to react to an initiative we've done, which is to think about whether we would be able to do a better job for the town in this planning, which we had a committee that was in fact devoted to be of assistance to the town and the school in putting these plans together. I'm just looking at her, also, I'm sorry to be, also invited the Chair of the Finance Committee, where this initiative really at its early beginning, quite some time ago, to also join us in this discussion this evening. So, that's the update. So, tonight, we'll talk about long-range capital planning, and then two weeks from now, we'll talk about Business Vitality. For the capital planning, Terry Alkman on the board is taking the initiative there, and for Business Vitality, Susan Bates will be taking the initiative on that. So, y'all want to come up? You want to go one at a time? It's all right, come on.
I'm way in the corner back there.
Anybody want to join us? It looks like you'd like to share. So, just the introduction, I, we all know that the town and the schools, which in fact carry out capital planning. I think the impetus for this, Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the impetus, at least in the Finance Committee, was when, when discussions started beginning about what's coming down the road, all of a sudden, you were looking at a potential middle school project, it could be something on the order of $90 million, and then really significant municipal needs, which could be the same. And the question the Finance Committee had was, "Well, that's a lot, would have a very significant impact on the tax burden for the town. We need to really get a more detailed handle on this, what really are the costs associated with these ventures, what's the timing, what could be possible," that kind of thing. So, if at all possible, we would get the jobs done, they'd have to get them from the town, but we would think about how it would be phased and timed, so it wouldn't have adverse impact on the taxes. Is that reasonably fair?
I think that's a very fair assessment. I think, I'll just color that a little.
My town is who you are.
By, yeah, Dean Banfield, I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee, 73 Walden Terrace. And so, I just thought I'd color that a little by saying that, from the perspective of the Finance Committee, one of the things we have struggled with a little is that these things occur a little bit in silos at this point. The town manager and the Finance Director have traditionally kind of managed a plan, and there's things slotted in, but if a specific initiative is occurring, say, at the school committee, that plan is not really consulted, that they just jump the queue and say, "We're going to do this," or things get slid. So, we, we're, we're focused on trying to find an integrated solution across the different entities in the town, and that, that's why we're pushing.
Okay. So, Superintendent, thank you for trying to ask. Perhaps you could start us off by comment.
Sure. I think Lori Hunter, Superintendent of Schools, we've done a pretty thorough job of reviewing our capital plan over the last year, especially as we went into last year's budget cycle. And I think there's two prongs to that. One is the middle school. That's our biggest, most substantial need. We're very grateful for the support to be able to go ahead with feasibility and schematic design, and we're starting that process, in fact, tomorrow night. And I think that's going to highly inform what the options are and what the community's going to consider as we get, get some actual design work done, and that will become a known entity rather than the unknown numbers that we're using right now to our best estimates. Aside from that, it's a far lesser scale once we get out of the middle schools. So, Ripley's got some infrastructure needs with really dated boilers and some other systems that, in some cases, haven't been replaced since the original building many, many, many years ago. And then we have some energy replacement units at Thoreau and Alcott that also have some needs and attention warranted there. We had purposely not put those in our capital plan for this year of the $900,000 that was allocated to us through the town manager's budget. We're doing other projects because we wanted to pursue, and with Kate Hanley's help, look at any possible green-related funds that might be available, because, because a lot of those efforts are related to either energy or infrastructure, for example, windows, things like that, and trying to really find any funds that might be out there. Our goal has been to work within the $900,000, or whatever approximate to that has been awarded to us through the town manager's budget over the last years. I think we might hit a point where it's hard to do all of the work because of the cost of the replacement units and work at Ripley to stay within that. So, we're trying to get more informed on what those options are and see what other subsidies we might find before we bring a proposal there. That said, comparatively to the needs at the middle school, we consider them far secondary in many ways. The, the middle school is about instruction and teaching and learning for kids as they go through school. Ripley, we're managing, we can continue to manage, we can phase those projects in and not have to do them all at once. The ERU units, similar, I think we can phase those in and not have to do them all at once. So, I think outside of that, Willard's and Good- So I think outside of that, Willard's in good shape. The high school's obviously in excellent shape. And we need to build some monies in there operationally to maintain that. But we're on the very early stages of even having to do much of that. So you're benefiting from the life you were hoping for out of the high school as we're in year four. So I think overall, the middle school's our primary need, which you've heard and responded to. And then we've got some infrastructure kinds of things that don't have to be one large ticket item. We can phase those in and look for subsidies as well.
Are there kind of things that would more or less be handled in the annual capital allocation?
That's what we're trying to explore. If we can't get some subsidy for some of these, then it's going to be hard to do all of it within the annual without it taking 10 or 12 years. So we're trying to see how low we can get those numbers to see. Our aim is to put it all in the annual if we can. An ERU unit, though, is $250,000 a piece. So we're not quite there at the moment to be able to be sure that we can do that in an efficient enough way over the next five years or so. So we're doing that homework now before we bring you a capital proposal in the coming cycle.
And does planning normally do include timing and cost estimates?
Absolutely, yes, yes. So we have a five-year plan and it's phased out over the course of the years as to what we would do when. Just like most plans, though, that as you look at them, urgencies might change and shift and things like that. So it's a fluid plan. But we did revamp the entire plan last fall when we were preparing for town meetings. So we're much more confident in the plan and feel like we've identified all of the needs. And now it's just a matter of mapping out the timing and the quantities. I think if the middle schools were not part of the discussion, the needs are far more identified and predictable. The middle schools being in the discussion is a very different story.
So I'm just trying to make sure I understand. So in this kind of planning that you do, you had a warrant article on the town for parking and fixing the road.
Yeah.
Independent of that, but you said you had kind of $250,000 items.
Right, between $250,000, $400,000. Those we're trying to map out within the allotment from the town manager's budget. In order to do it in any kind of efficient way, though, because if it's $250,000 a piece, by the time we do all of the units, it will be many years out before we're able to do that. So we're trying to get those costs down as much as possible to see if there's green funds out there, anything that would subsidize that in order to benefit and reduce costs as much as possible and be more efficient about it. So we're doing our homework as to what's going to go into that $900,000 over the next five years. The one other dangling piece, you're right to mention the paving and the, certainly the paving, the parking. We know we have other discussions to have, but the paving of that loop road needs further discussion, too.
To just clarify, Mike, there's two distinct things. The town manager's budget takes care of CPS and the loop road and the parking. That's all under CCHS. And they are completely separate financial activity.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. So I'm Carrie LaFleur, the finance director. And I mean, my role really is to try to help figure out how to fund the projects, not really driving the projects. A couple of things that might be helpful to mention to people listening. Dr. Hunter is referring to the town manager's budget. That's the capital plan. It's an independent warrant article. It's not really part of the budget. But the amount that is available on an annual basis for the capital, for the capital plan or the debt plan, is what we call it internally, is, it comes from our financial policies. So we have financial policies relative to capital spending that say that on an annual basis, we should be expending 7% to 8%. 2% to 3% of that is on what we call operating capital, which is actually in the town manager's budget. And that's for items that are certainly under $100,000 and typically more like under $50,000. Anything that's over $100,000 or so is part of the capital or the debt plan. And we expend five to about 5% each year on that. What has typically been included is about $900,000 for the schools. I think we've tried to bump that up to about $1 million in, I'm not sure if that begins in '21, but we're moving towards that based on the capital plan that the school has provided to the town manager, recognizing those needs. But the land purchases, large equipment, the ambulances, the fire trucks, those are the types of things that are in that plan. There is reference in that plan to the larger municipal projects such as the public works facility. But they're really, the numbers associated with that are not really based on any hard data. When I started three years ago, I think the first town meeting I was here for, we asked for money for the municipal facility study, which is Kate Hodges's project. And that was to kind of put together some harder information on numbers related to the town's capital needs.
And Kate, if you want to comment on.
Well, so we've been working on the town's municipal facility study for about a year and a half now. And, you know, municipal, our timetable for saying what we need and assessing what we have, it's not necessarily that the schools, you know, are easier, but it's one building and it's one facility. And we're looking at assessing 26 facilities and trying to figure out what each operation needs as far as square footage and how that fits into what the industry standards are for how much space a person needs. How many cubicles can you fit in the space? What do you need for public areas? How many restrooms do you need to have? And so it's been a difficult process. So I think a lot of times we hear, well, you know, we haven't heard anything from the town we authorized to see, you know, two years ago, and it hasn't moved anywhere. Well, it isn't for lack of, you know, doing things like that. But we first have to assess what we already have. And then there had to be a number of different conversations. And so, you know, we have 12 department heads, 11 if you don't count the town manager. And I guarantee you, if anyone were to sit in the room with those 12 people, there's 12 different ideas about how you want to do something and 12 different ways to fix it. There's probably more like 24 different ways to fix it because we each have an A and a B. So the TBA architects that have been working with us are trying to compile all of that data into something that's more reasonable. And it's time consuming and it takes time. And so I keep being asked, you know, where's the draft, where's the draft? It's just not as simple as, you know, we're going out and we're going to have a feasibility study. What, the main question that they've been asking is, you know, what do you want? A is that you renovate in place. And I can tell you for this building, the idea for renovating in place meant that they would take everything out and just keep the shell because we can't change the outside, reinforce the entire building with iron, and then make what is three floors into four floors. And the tune of that was several million. You could literally pick up a building and rebuild it somewhere else, except for on where? What piece of property can we do that on? So that's sort of what we're facing is the public works facility is inadequate for what's there. Would it be adequate if the planning and land management office vacated? Maybe, but the entire thing is in the flood plain. So are we going to build up? Well, if you build up, then the garage underneath is going to crumble. So you now need to just take everything down. Where is the Department of Planning and Land Management going to go? They could fit into this building if we had another floor, but that's a couple of million. And where are we all going to go when you move us out while you got the whole place? So there's all these factors in play that we're trying to be sustainable and whatnot. But we also have to be realistic. And we can't just shut down for a year while they rebuild. So I think you're going to find that what is going to come from this study is that our facilities are inadequate. That's Captain Obvious. And, you know, we're going to need a new municipal center. And then it needs to be decided, what can we access? Is it already built or shall we build it? And what's the square footage of that? And then work backwards by plugging in operations based on square footage.
And are we going to get detailed numbers when this is completed of cost estimates and options?
Yep, so what we're working on now is essentially a mathematical table that you can play around with that says that if you had a building of X amounts, say you have a building of 30,000 square feet, you would say the Department of Planning and Land Management in the year 2020 occupies X amount of square feet. But based on the rate of growth and what we've been doing and historical data over the past 10 years, in another 10 years, they're going to need Y amount of square feet. So you take that and you basically drag it into the building. And then you say, okay, the town manager's office. When I began, it was myself and the town manager and two administrative folks. And now we have sustainability, facilities, we have another administrative person in there. We stuck Andrew in the corner. We have someone in a closet. So there's enough people that that's going to require.
So when will this study?
So TBA Architects is hoping to come, which we discussed at one of your meetings, either at the end of July or beginning of August. And essentially present you with what we're calling option B, which is major renovations in place. Or option C, which is you need to get a new building or purchase a building that can, you know, accompany X amount of square feet. And it'll come with some cost estimate. And then the determination is on the community. Do we want to spend time, energy and money either researching, purchasing a building or purchasing a plot of land and then building? Or do you want, do we want to allocate money to renovate buildings? And if so, in what way, what goes first?
So one is a town campus and the other is individual renovation?
Correct, in a way that they call it space mining. So this building can't have any more space mined without some considerable changes. One of the things is, you know, and I would, I don't advocate for this, but the hearing room. They said, well, if you got rid of the hearing room, you could fit. And I said, I can't be here when you're in that hearing room. No way. So some of these things are just, they're nonstarter. And then others are, you know, things that we can discuss. But I think that what you're going to find is that we do need one central facility. And I don't know what that looks like and I don't know how many years out. And the fear, at least on the municipal side, is that because the town's feasibility and evaluation has been slower, that we're going to miss the window and have to wait till the debt might be paid off from another school project before this one moves forward. And that could be the reality of the situation. But at least let's talk about it.
Just the two options that you talked about are new, what changed language, new campus as opposed to, what did you call it, space mining?
Yes.
But, I mean, you know, if it's a single campus, it's going to be like the middle school. It's a giant chunk of debt we're going to have to contend with. And if it's mining, well, I don't really know. But if it sounds like that, we might be able to be spread out over this building and that.
So as it is right now, if you were to add up the space mining that we've done so far with the renovations, that will likely, all told, be more expensive than purchasing a campus if the land is not included. Now, if you have to purchase the land and then build something on it, that's, that is the most expensive option. But you're right, that that's a sort of one warrant article or two and the big chunk versus renovating, you know, piecemeal.
Is the architect, is it TBA? Or is there anywhere in the plan that's capturing efficiency gains? Because that, I mean, that's an economic.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so one of the things that we're talking about, particularly in the option C, is the ability to have one building. And so theoretically, you would have, you know, combining of perhaps, you know, purchasing and administrative functions. Certainly you would have, you know, one building with the HVAC, one building with, you know, the energy. And while it would be a larger building, you know, some of the older buildings, this is a perfect example, are relatively inefficient as far as, you know, internal systems. This building is a challenge because our HVAC is actually across the street because it can't, it can't be here. And so that's a temporary situation that they've been very accommodating for us. But it basically is plumbed through the parking lot and into here. So it's not something that we could even say, let's move, let's move more people in here. We don't have any way to do that.
I think you've articulated, at least from my perspective, exactly what the finance committee was concerned about. Now, as from the town's point of view, we can look at it as which is the best building option for the town, given our needs now and the future. The finance committee, though, could map those options into impacts on taxes. So you get a spike for something like a middle school. And you get three spikes if you do option C. And you get one drawn spike if you do option A. How much distance between your middle school and the mosque do you leave? You know, that kind of stuff.
What's the app to tell you to put a taxpayer for these spikes?
That's what Tommy tells us.
That's exactly right. I think the concern was that while we, if we look at various options, you know, again, the middle schools look further down the road right now. But if we backed it up and did this, you know, we looked at all the options, would a major consideration not be just the impact of a particular project, but how we disperse this impact? And so it's both, as Dean said, it's the integration of these two so we don't lose track of it. And then it's the timing of it and its impact on the taxes, tax rate, as we think about options.
And there's commitment to it, which is when something is coming up for either maintenance or it's term, it doesn't get bumped aside or slid out. We stay true to the program.
Well, I think more, I said, I'm just more or less.
More or less.
Things we often need to reorganize. So Terry, perhaps I could turn to you. So one of the options we thought about is would committee be enabled to the schools in the town in getting a spot? Perhaps, Terry, you could sort of lead what you have as the charge for the committee? I think membership and stuff like that, there's no way you're copying or something distributed.
Well, I think I could. Also, just letting you, one preliminary remark. It sounds like we have already in the works several types of capital planning going on. We have, as Carrie mentioned, the under $100,000 items that are in the operating budget for the town and probably in the school budget as well, like large computers or whatever. And then we have a capital planning article that is, you know, the town manager's capital plan or the debt plan or whatever. And I think personally that we're doing a reasonably good job in those areas. And what I was trying to address with this is more along the lines of what Dean is saying for the very big projects like the middle school and this big option B or C or whatever it's going to be for the town. That's where we don't have enough planning right now. So that is what I was thinking when I drafted this up. And I'm looking forward to discussion and input from everybody. I'm also thinking about it as more calling it a group or a team than a committee. I guess it probably doesn't matter. It's going to follow all of the open meeting laws and have public input. But I do see it as needing input from staff and from the finance committee. And the finance committee is precluded from being on another town committee. So if we call it a team or a group, we might be able to work around that item.
Can you give us some experience that we've had in the finance, from the finance committee perspective? The school committee formed a subcommittee, which was a legitimate full bore subcommittee for their budget reviews. There was a, you know, they were looking at their budgets. And the finance committee had sent three, usually three liaison attendees. We were not committee members.
Right.
But we were vocal. We contributed research. We acted as, though we might be on the committee, but we could not be named as such. But we were just more than an observer. We were liaisons.
Right, liaison is formed, you just can't vote.
Well, we could not vote.
Right.
So we, it was almost like auditing a class. And it worked well. And it worked well. The committee had good rapport and our contributions were welcome.
I agree.
I think that they could work this way. And you just call this a committee. Calling it a team, it's like a duck.
All right, whatever, whatever.
So the purpose that I see is to develop a multi-year, and I left the number of years blank for us to decide, multi-year capital plan, including an all foreseeable town and school capital projects, and to update this plan every year. So Dr. Hunter's talked about a five-year capital plan that schools have. And Kate's talking about how we're on our way to developing a big one for the town. And this would kind of integrate everything into one plan. Maybe we don't need to include the things that are under $100,000 that are in the operating budget. Maybe we don't even need to include the 5% that's in the town manager's capital plan. I don't know. But we definitely need to include the very large projects that we don't right now know how we're going to afford them. And we need to figure out how we're going to afford them and how we're going to time them. So the plan is going to help instill integrated fiscal policies among the select board, the school committee, that's probably should say both school committees, and the finance committee. And this is essential because we want to build and maintain high quality infrastructure. We want to manage concrete citizens' tax burden, maintain our AAA bond rating, and have transparent process with input from the public. So the membership could be a member of the CPS committee who's also a member of the CCHS school committee. That'll probably be the most helpful, helpful from the school side. A member of the select board, a member of the finance committee, the town manager, the finance director from the town, the superintendent of schools, and the school director of finance and operations. Possibly, we'd want some citizens at large or someone who was maybe on the tax fairness committee or something like that. And as I said, the team would have left the chair, keep minutes, observe the opening law, comply with all the laws. And the plan should include a priority of the projects according to need, cost benefit, cost avoidance, and environmental resilience. Recommend the optimal timing for maximum affordability. Project include the operating costs, as Dean was just referring to, staff, utilities, maintenance. Include any potential savings in alternative revenues. And we have a lot of these possibilities. We have some state aid maybe, user fees maybe, sale of land, donations, public, private ventures, utility savings from green initiatives. We have a lot of possibilities in there. And I think the middle school is a great example of how green initiatives might save us money or maybe not. But if they do, they might save on the operating side, but they cost more on the construction side. So all of this has to be really thought through. And this last paragraph I kind of took from the MMA, where they're talking about the impact of climate change and evaluating our vulnerability of our capital assets. So the public should have some input. And the team should look at what other towns do and use best practices. Post some kind of plan, recommendations online, and somewhere in a hard copy like the town warrant or the finance committee book. So that's my draft.
I think the thing to focus on here, and there's a lot of detail in any committee charge, and it matters. But the primary one is sort of the purpose and the duties of such committee. And I guess the point like question to folks is, would this be helpful to you? Or would it just be some other thing you'd have to contaminate? You know, the finance committee essentially works for town meeting. Their job is to present information to town meeting about fiscal impact of anything so that the town can make a good judgment. So somewhere down the road, this information has to follow off to the finance committee so they can do the job. I don't want to put you on the spot, but is something like this helpful? And you've had recent experience with something similar, so.
Yeah, I think any place where we all get together and share information and collaborate is very helpful. We've been doing a lot more of that, and I think that is incredibly important. I think the one thing we'd have to just be mindful of is that this committee would have to be complementary to a building committee that's getting up and running and two school committees that have their own autonomy. And how that all meshes together would be the part I would want to help, I would need support in navigating. But any place we all get in the same room has already shown to be immensely helpful, just as we've built bridges with all the departments in town and continue to do so, that we're finding lots of ways to support one another and to know more of what each other's doing. And as Dean said, just merely sitting in the room together regularly facilitates all of that. So I think all of the premise is positive. The actual who's doing what and how it all complements, the other standing bodies would be what I just want more conversation. And I speak for myself, not the committee members behind me who are listening to what I'm saying.
From the perspective of the finance committee, we struggle every year with the warrant. That's our main thing. And the warrant, by definition, does not necessarily encourage the kind of collaboration that we're talking about here. So people can bring their article that says, we need a new loop road or we want to do this. And those things then become the sum total of what the finance committee struggles with each year. So anything we can do which helps us to collaborate and bring forward integrated proposals that end up on the warrant and dovetail properly or not properly, but dovetail to the benefit of the town is all to the good. That's my two cents on that.
From my perspective, and not speaking for the town manager, but just from the perspective of helping people understand the financial impacts and how to fit all of these pieces together, I think it makes sense. I think when we first started talking about the middle school project, it was how can we, how can we fit this in without there being an additional financial impact? And I think very quickly, people understood that there was no, there was no way to make that happen. And there's, I noticed one of the things that Terry included is the AAA bond rating, which is very important to the town. But I think an understanding of, you know, if we go forward with a middle school project, maybe that has a temporary impact on the AAA bond rating. But what does that mean? Does it really mean that it, it costs us more to do that project? Does it mean that we shouldn't go forward with that project because we might risk the AAA when there may be, there are other factors that go into it? The quality of the schools is part of the bond rating. So understanding what the trade-offs might be and that they might just be for a temporary basis, I think that would be important. But again, not, not speaking for Kate.
You have a part of you.
Other than I just think that, you know, the conversations that have been happening even just unofficially through members of the school and members of my staff have been helpful because I think that that was lacking for quite some time. So to understand their goals and initiatives and for them to understand ours is helpful. I'm not sure that we've ever sat down in the, you know, the past couple of years and said, hey, you know, we don't have any space. And for them to say, yeah, you really don't have any space, you know, and just have an understanding.
We don't doubt that. We come to meetings in your buildings, we know that.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's been good, it's been helpful. I think it's very collaborative. And I think the goal of getting the finance committee through Carrie, you know, the data that you need to say to the community, you know, what does the community want? You know, we hear a lot of complaints sometimes when people say, well, I have to go to three different places to get XYZ signed. Okay, but do you want to go to three different places? Or do you want to spend X amount of dollars in only one place? I mean, that's not a decision that I made. That's a decision that the community, it's a very simplistic way of looking at it. But there's a cost to centralizing and there's a benefit.
I think Laurie's made her points that I've been not concerned about. I think importantly, the functioning of this, if we do it. We've got a middle school feasibility, something we've already got done underway. You have a consultant TBA working for you. So to me, this committee is one that is going to take information from various organizations, the town, the schools. And you've got a subcommittee from a subcommittee. And Kate's got a working group, a working group. And be the committee that assembles it all, goes back to the superintendent and says, I'm sorry, this isn't detailed enough. You forgot this boy over here. And the same with the town so that they're the puller together and integrator of all of this information. But then come to us, then go to anyone, go to citizens, go to finance committee. So I think we can't get in the way of a feasibility committee or your work with TBA, but they need to extract and sort of be on top of. You said you were going to come on.
Right, right. They would extract the information and then work with Carrie to come up with some kind of a timing proposed that the finance committee and town meeting would, you know.
Well, I think on an annual, they produce on an annual basis a report. We have to get the timing of it all scored away so that it's not, you know, in December after the finance committee's done its most of its work for the year.
Oh, I didn't mean that, Susan. I meant, when you, when you look at that graph, I have it somewhere. Everybody's seen it where the debt is, you know.
Projections over time.
Right, projections over time for the, if we have to go through a proposition to override, we want to minimize the burden as much as we can and make sure that, you know, people can afford it and they will say yes to the projects. So they need to be timed the best way that we can find them.
That's, that's true. Are there more comments? I just, I mean, I think that the process itself, the one thing I've been really encouraged by this is that I think there's been a historic competition between the schools and the town for the finances of the town and the needs. And it's, and I think sometimes the town doesn't have the same voice in the rooms because the town isn't staffed by our children. And, you know, that's, it's just a, it's a fact. But there, all of it goes to the quality of life in Concord. And if you go back to the initial Concord, we got a very strong message about what our priorities are. And that's all of this. And that's a big swallow. So all of it, and it means money spent over time. I think one of the opportunities that I want to really hone in on because I think we will be surprised that the many financial benefits will come from redesign across the board. Efficiencies gained across the board. Discoveries from the town, the schools' experiences. Access to funds that we didn't know existed. And I think having a capture mechanism in this committee is one. Having one of that committee's responsibilities to have an annual capture mechanism.
So let me suggest the following. So everybody's seen the draft charge for, and we can certainly put it online. It's not really up there, it's already up there. So if anybody's listening or any of you folks have or members of the board have comments, suggestions about the charge that Terry has put together for, let's get the information in, please send it to Andrew. Terry will have the responsibility of trying to put it all back together again. And then let's put this on this committee revised draft on our agenda for July 1st meeting to see if we can bring this to some kind of closure. Does that seem reasonable as an approach, Susan?
I was just wondering if the, yeah, I think feedback at any time is great. But given what Kate said about the end of July and beginning of August, the TBA was going to present some data, although I guess the principals can discuss that.
Well, yeah, again, I think this committee is going to take information from the feasibility, the middle school feasibility, from Kate's work with TBA, and that's going to be input to them. So I don't think there's a conflict. It's going to clear. All right, so Laurie, Carrie.
So the only, one of the challenges in this whole process is that, yes, we have the middle school onboard committee looking at the level of effort starting. Facility is already starting. So inherent in that is a buying for, you know, projecting out how this would unfold over time. And are we in a position that we might be able to tackle this in a more neutral way, I guess, and as neutral as you can be with the needs that are before us? If we bring in somebody who is a capital planning consultant to work with the committee? And I'm perhaps jumping ahead on that idea, but, you know, I went back and looked at the report from 2002, I think, the last committee. And they attempted to lay out major projects over time. They recommended, you know, what should come. And it was derailed, essentially, you know.
That's why I said the commitment is important. That, that plan was heavily derailed.
Right, exactly. And, you know, the need is great, and we know that. The need is great. It's going to, I think it's going to, as much confidence as I have in all the actors who are we're naming that would be participating in this committee, I think it's going to be a tough, tough job to tackle without some outside guidance. Yeah, just.
Well, as a, again, to me, I think you're right. But it's related to the fact that there is a middle school feasibility committee that's going to do the heavy lifting here. This committee's not going to do the heavy lifting. The same with the town. It's going to be TBA working with town staff that's going to do the heavy lifting. My thinking is that this committee takes that information, pushes it back if they don't see something that should be there and tries to get it organized. Neither the feasibility committee nor TBA, I apologize if I'm wrong here, is going to wonder about the tax impact on this. That's not their job. Their job is to get a feasibility study done so you can come to the town with a project that you can decide about. So this committee is going to take in information by more, what's called, professional organizations and try to get it organized in a way that it can be just put to the town in making decisions about capital projects. I think what we can do, and we've done on other committees, is when you write your membership, and if it turns out we have members of the general citizens, we can articulate people with capital planning experience. We've done that on any number of committees, for housing committees and middle school projects, sustainability in there. Somebody from the middle school can come up. Let's get our draft and see.
I think also the real key to this committee is going to be the collaboration and the unified consensus. I think if leaders from the schools, town, and finance are all saying the same thing to town meeting, it's just so much better for the public to see all the leaders have debated it, they've hashed it. debated it, they've hashed it out, and they've come to a plan, that gives people confidence to go forward with the plan. And that, I think, is the key to it.
Right, thank you very much for getting this done. Thanks, Paul, for contributing to this, and we'll get this charge down, and we'll come back and discuss it on July 1st meeting. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
The next item really is a review of the draft, but we've sort of already done that, and it's determined where the assignment is. So, the next item on our agenda is discussion of possible dates for the 2020 Annual Town Meeting. So I think I said this at the last town meeting, our selectmen's meeting. The first week in April is Wednesday is the beginning of Rosh Chana, so this first week is kind of shot. Second week, there's a major anniversary of the Concord Chorus, and they have a whole set of programs lined up for that week, so that would be really disruptive. The third week in April is Patriots Day Number One and School Vacation Number Two, Reverse Vice, I don't know which one should be number one, but that week is shot. So, it looks to me like we're going to be thinking about...
A late time.
The last weeks in April. I did check with the superintendent of schools, she said that would be okay with her. So I think, I think if we've got any additional input coming in under our next agenda, we should, we should get that as a set the date for the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, and encourage people to write.
Do you want to put it on the 22nd?
Yes, I think Monday is the 28th, or...
No, Monday is the 27th.
28th, 29th, 30th of May, and encourage moderator...
Of April, April.
Of April.
Yeah.
Encourage moderator to keep it.
I think we've had many years when we had town meeting met last week in April.
We have, but we've been trying to move it up with, you know, just a second, or I think we've had it early, the first would be snow, the last time it worked pretty well.
Right.
The one thing that we had been concerned about was make sure the finance report, they have enough time to get that up, so I think later is easier.
Right, like last meeting, we were talking about possibly the end of March, and I think that would...
No, I was disquieted as I walked out. All right, so we'll technically have that as our date, and we will encourage people to write to us, and we'll double check if you have comments.
Not on that, Mike, I've got a question, are you going to have...
You know the girl.
Dori Keo, 51 MacArthur Road. And I wondered if you're going to accept any kind of comments on the capital planning, or do we need to write them to you?
I would appreciate, so we have a clean record, if you could write them to us, if that's not, if you want to say what's on your mind right now.
No, the one question I had was, the letter that's included in the packet is the one from Tom Tarpe in February, which talks about a facilities planning committee, and this is a capital planning committee. And I just wanted to clarify, is this just about like school buildings or town buildings, or could it be in things like roads projects, or putting in new sewers? So is it going to be just, are we just, are you just concentrating on one thing?
We have made that distinction before.
Just to think about that, Ben, I'm totally, I'm so pleased that you're doing this long-term planning. I think that I speak for many who say that, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Notice of unique real property for 18 Cambridge Turnpike. Kate, do you want...
Hi.
Andrew, bring us up to speed on this.
Emerson Fields.
Oh, this is the one where, this is the 30B, sorry. Town council had sent something along that the select board needs to vote because the parcel would have been subject to the 30B procurement regulations, so we need to vote effectively, saying that we're not going through the 30B regulations, but that we are knowingly not going through the 30B regulations for procurement.
And we have rather extensive motion that needs to be...
And just so that people listening know, can you explain what 30B?
So 30B is Massachusetts general law, 30B, which covers procurement and acquisition of real property is in fact a procurement when we buy anything. So normally what happens is there's particular thresholds where you either have to solicit three quotes, or you have to go out for a formal bid or RFP process, request for proposal process. And so in instances where the town is either offered a right or first refusal, or we're interested in a parcel of land and we'd like to purchase that, we often, we don't go out for three quotes for the land because it's being sold at what it's being sold for. So it's really just a formality to say that, in all intents and purposes, we try to abide by Chapter 30B, but in some instances it doesn't apply, and this is one.
And this is quite a unique property.
This is a unique property, right.
Can we just state what the property is, just...
The former home of Ralph Waldo Emerson.
Right, and so this was actually the subject of one of the town meeting warrant articles that was discussed actually in the capital plan.
Yeah, and the community preservation.
Right.
It's not the building, it's land on that campus.
Correct, it's part of the Emerson Thore Amble, and what it basically outputs to where the Ice House is right now, it's, and it butts the old cart path. So it'll essentially have that town forest that goes over into fairyland.
Right, so it completes.
All right, so are we going to take motion, let's...
Move with respect to the land known and numbered as 18 and 28 Cambridge Turnpike, Concord, Mass. 01742, containing 6.3965 acres, more or less, shown as Lot 2 on a plan entitled Plan of Land in Concord, Massachusetts, Millsex County, dated February 12, 2019, prepared by Stamsky and McNary, Inc., being a portion of the land described in a deed recorded with the Millsex South District deeds in Book 5478, page 46, the property. That the board has determined that advertising under General Laws, Chapter 30B, for the town's acquisition of the property will not benefit the governmental body's interest due to the unique qualities of the property. Specifically, the property which contains the former home of Ralph Waldo Emerson is historically significant, making the property unique, in that it provides the town with the opportunity to highlight the history of the town. The property is also uniquely situated in that, in that it is, in that consists of wooded wetland traversed by the millbrook and active agricultural land, all of which will be preserved through the town's acquisition of the property for conservation purposes.
For second.
Second.
If you refer to this question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is public comments. Sheldon?
Again, Sheldon Hines, 74 The Valley Road. About a week ago, my wife and I sent a letter to the selectman, and I was wondering, are you going to bring this up in point 17 in the next few minutes?
I am.
Okay, so I don't have to, and all I want to say is that I hope you consider the importance of this issue, and that...
We know it's important, we heard about it two or three weeks ago, I think, when Linda had attended a Hatz meeting, and there was a significant presentation there, so we know it's important. I don't honestly know yet exactly how we're going to deal with it, so we do have your letter and all of the attachments, and I promise you we'll...
We'll take it into consideration.
Take it into consideration as soon as we can.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, and I was wondering, one other question having to do with the RFP process, is there, does the town currently have an engineer who is familiar with telecommunications on staff, who is, who can analyze the RFP responses, or is there somebody, a consultant who's on retainer to analyze all this, or is the town people that mentioned going to be the only ones who are analyzing all this?
Kate?
The town has an RF engineer, IDK Communications Incorporated, from Littleton, whom we've used for past RFPs and who reviewed the RFP proposal that we were putting out. My understanding is that there are a number of independent consultants that the planning board and ZBA have to review proposals when they come in from certain carriers. I don't think that we've necessarily determined, we don't have the RF engineer coming in to tell the town of Concord what the best place is for the town of Concord, so I'm confused about what your question is, we're not having an independent RF engineer look at the proposals, not right now.
So there's nobody on staff that, that has technical knowledge of how to interpret charts provided by Verizon or other carriers as to what the need is in certain corridors in the town, and to compare, you know, to see if, you know, if what they're proposing is going to satisfy things going forward? I mean, the reason I'm mentioning is that towers can have, I mean, poles can have one, two, or three carriers on them, we have to treat all carriers fairly inequitively, we can't just give space only to Verizon, or AT&amp;T and T-Mobile will complain, and it's a whole host of issues having to do with compliance with FCC regulations and state laws and others that may not be obvious if two of the three bidders are actually tower companies, who will then go off and solicit, you know, bids from carriers to locate on these towers. It's a very, it's extremely complicated, and I don't think, and I don't, I haven't heard so far that there's anybody employed by the town who's capable of analyzing all this, as the RFPs are being, as the proposals are being responded to.
With all due respect, Mr. Hines, you don't know our resumes, so I think you should give us the opportunity...
I'm talking about engineering, that's all, right, I know.
I was going to ask...
I'm not being disrespectful, I'm just, I asked if there was an engineer...
I was going to come back to the select board, so we'll have a chance to review what the town has come up with, then, and perhaps you'll be able to attend that meeting.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to your comments. Thank you. The next item...
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Please come on in.
Good evening, hi, my name is Mark Ayless, I live at 62 Prescott Road. First, I want to strongly, you know, endorse the idea of any coordinated capital planning efforts or groups, committees, et cetera, I think that's really important. The second thing is, I wanted to make the board aware of a problem that we've been having with a dramatic increase of early morning night flights from Hanscom, and I've written, right, so I wanted to give, I wanted to give, if you could pass these around, just, here's a list that my wife Tanya made up, I think there's enough copies, of kind of typical thing. The reason I want to speak about it now a little bit is because I'm hoping that between the two committees, the Hanscom Area Towns Committee and the Hanscom, let's, let me just make sure I got the names right, the Hanscom Fields Advisory Commission, that the town could more effectively provide a mechanism for improving the response of Massport to noise complaints. The Hanscom Field Advisory Commission comes out of, I think, the Hanscom Field Master Plan in 1978, and the way they have of keeping track of flights seems to date from probably about that date. The, if, the way they respond to, say you have to respond to noise complaints, is it's up to the individual to, you know, stay awake for all these repetitive flights, and let me back up just a second, since April, things have changed. We've lived in the same place since February 2012, and we're fine with military flights, we're fine with the daytime flights, noise, no problem like that, we're talking specifically about night flights between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And starting in April, what we've noticed is a totally different pattern, and we've gotten no satisfactory explanation from Massport about what's going on. So one of the things I want to ask is if, you know, with the town's involvement in these two committees, the Hanscom Area Towns Committee and the Hanscom Airfield Commission could try to help us get some answers. We've also reached out to our state rep, too. What typically happens is unpredictably from day to day, at, you know, 4:00 AM, 6:00 AM, 5:00 AM, something like that, there'll be a commercial jet flight waking us up, and then 10 minutes later another, and then 10 minutes later another, and then 10 minutes later another, so it becomes kind of a thing like, okay, when's the next one, when is this going to end, et cetera.
Are you very surprised it's a commercial flight?
Well, I have here in, one particular response showing that it's a commercial flight, and that's another mysterious thing, I mean, I have no problem with the military flights, but there seems to be a lack of transparency and information on Massport's operation. That, you know, here, I don't, I only have a couple copies of this, but, you know, here's a, the kind of thing that a, on a visual flight rules flight, the Hanscom people say they don't have any information on exactly what pattern the flight takes off. They know it on the ground, but I can't believe, but they're saying they have no idea where the plane goes then, after in our airspace here, near a military facility. But for instance, in the area of Lake Tahoe, the local example of a page from noise complaint response from their airport, it shows a clear track of a plane that's operating on, you know, visual flight rules, et cetera. So my, my request is that the select board try to clarify the ways in which the town can communicate more effectively with Massport and the community. The, I think there's partly confusion because there are two committees, there's the Hatz, which was formed, I believe, in like 1992 or something, as a, let's see, as a, between Bedford, Concord, Lexington, Lincoln, although it has space for Acton and somebody else, as a growth and development policy committee under Mass Public Law, Chapter 40, Section 4. So that's kind of saying like advice for the future. The HFAC, the advisory committee, is actually, comes out of something like in the 1978 Hanscom Field Master Plan, and it is something where the town has to appoint a voting member to go there and kind of, you know, really interact on this. So my main, you know, my main request is just that, you know, we have a problem, us going to Massport with their kind of archaic, not very clear method, that, you know, you have to like go to each single event, and then you get a report back, which has mostly boilerplate, very little information, and they won't tell you what's changed. They also have one more, I'll just mention one more thing, they kind of give these answers like, well, we do charge a fee for, you know, non-medical, non-military flights during these hours, but, you know, it would be nice if the fee came to the towns that are being impacted by the night flight noise. I don't know where that money goes. Thank you.
Correct, the name?
Alicia Boyajin, 33 Stowe Street. I just wanted to make one last quick comment about the two RFPs, three, okay, sorry, I was late, I had to drive my son. And Kate Hodge has been very clear that the town is not obligated to move forward on all three, if all three went out. So I just wanted to make a quick comment and remind the Select Board that the original petition that was presented by residents was for one site. And I have the coverage maps from the RF engineer back in 2018. And the coverage map that he provided at that time for just one pole at Kaiser Road showed pretty good coverage for the town of center and even reaching a little bit to the high school yard, so. Yeah, so I, I just wanted to reiterate that if it was at all possible and reasonable for the town to start with addressing the coverage issue one pole at a time, it would seem a reasonable effort and see if adding the one would, would improve that capacity problem rather than adding one to, two to three at one time would make sense.
The question you missed, what Hodges indicated was it didn't appear to her anywhere and to Patricia's speaking with, that the Walden Street site seemed to be a very good alternative.
To Kaiser Road?
Right. So there's already seeming to be a conclusion on site.
Okay. And then my last comment was, I, we were, residents were trying to find information on what the HDC's response was to height of towers anywhere, including Walden. We can, that conversation dropped off and we were a little.
We have not received anything to date.
Okay.
That'll wind up being part of the formal permitting act to adjust.
I would imagine, I would imagine if we decided to go through with the Kaiser Road, you know, something on that campus, that I would think that whomever is chosen would want to have a preliminary answer from the HDC rather than to spend the time and effort, you know, to go through it. I think that was the point of the exercise months ago, and it never really was buttoned up, so.
Okay.
Agreed.
Yeah, and then my last comment was, some residents also were talking about the town of Revere, their police and fire station have requested that their tower be removed, and their council supported, is supporting that effort, whether or not it will happen, but it was just a curious comment.
Why would they ask it to be removed?
Because of potential health effects, because the question, the article that's in the local Revere paper said, yeah. So, yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Community liaison reports.
On the 5th of June, I went to the West Concord Advisory Committee, and they spoke, they debriefed on the May Open House, which a number of us attended, and were processing feedback they got from that, but they were all, everybody was pleased with the event. On the 8th, I went to a MMA Select Board Seminar that was for new and returning Select Board members, and I attended sessions on consensus building and regional shared services. On the 10th, I went to see Tammy Bouvet at the Open House, and there are just a few people there, but she talked about her, about her, what she's supporting in the state legislature and the bills that are starting to come up. And on the, on the horizon, the near horizon was the Millionaire Tax. I don't know what happened there, but. On the 11th, I went to the Planning Board, and they spent a lot of time at the beginning of the meeting talking about the tree law, tree by law implementation, and it's a lot more complicated than you would think. So that's, that was a very interesting discussion. The 13th was the Historical Commission, where they did goal setting. They talked about two properties, neither of which I was familiar with. One's 317 Garfield Road, which they're getting, the owner wants to separate, there's a building on the property that's on the National Register of Historic Places, and the owner wants to segregate that and another building and preserve it, so it doesn't, nothing happens to it. The other property they talked about, which the town owns, is the Wheeler Harrington House, which has tenants, new tenants in it, there had been a tenant for a long time, and now there's a new one, and the tenants came and talked about things that they would like to, the town's already agreed to do some things, but they have some questions about some other issues. And then on Sunday, three of us had the distinct pleasure of being at the Melvin Memorial Dedication, soggy as it was, but it was a really beautiful ceremony.
I attended a meeting of the Concord Housing Authority, and they continued the discussion about the, that HUD is trying to get rid of, quite frankly, federal housing, because they just don't have the money for the capital upkeep of those units across the country. So our own CHA has less, has 18 units, and so they can be fast tracked on repositioning these units. They are mindful that they, and they're working with Marcia and Liz Russ on this, they're mindful that they want, if they do repositioning, that they want to keep whatever alternative they choose in the form of vouchers, whether they're project-based vouchers or tenant-based vouchers. They want to choose the alternative that will keep these units on the town's SHI, and I think that's important. The discussion that they're, that we should all be aware of, however, as they pursue this, this is going to take months, maybe even a couple of years to implement, but it's triggering that they may also have to develop a 501(c)(3) as Friends of the Concord Housing Authority or some like unit to process all of this. So given that we keep talking about, at some point we'd like to diminish some of the, the number of committees we have, much less the number of independent housing groups we have. That may or may not happen. The state also attended a ZBA meeting, and I have to say, this ZBA meeting was, had a full agenda. We went till 11 o'clock that night, and it's the first time that meeting has gone that late. Let me just point out two items that were of high interest, I think. One was the trustee of reservations wants to expand the number of events that they're going to hold, including one event that potentially could bring over 500 individuals. And that overlaps and presents some problems for the adjoining, not only for the property itself, some people, some of the public had concerns about that in terms of the nature of the site, what the site is for, and the protection of the land. But it also presents some problems with the adjacent national park in terms of overflow, in terms of parking, all kinds of other issues. So that was a high interest item. And the ZBA and Planning Department have asked the trustees to come back with more information and to continue that conversation. The other high, interesting item of note is that many of the properties that the ZBA now is asked to pass judgment on involve non-conforming lots. And previously, Jim White, who is chair, has been chair of that committee, has mentioned that that's basically, in many cases, what's left is non-conforming lots. So we have new challenges in terms of how they're being looked at. There was a couple of citizen comments, however, about, it seems that the ZBA is always passing, approving these petitions that come before them, and they asked, you know, when does the ZBA not approve these? So it was a bit of a challenge in terms of their process.
Just for the record, it's Jim Smith.
Thank you, thank you, Jim Smith. I also, with Susan, attended the Planning Board, and the particular item I was interested in is the housing initiatives that they're looking on in terms of expanding housing options, since that's one of our topics. And they spent that particular night looking at all kinds of issues related to accessory apartments. And next time, I think they're going to be looking at duplexes as the topic that they're going to dissect. So they're, they're working as fast as they can to, with the idea that hopefully they'll be bringing something forward for the next work. And they hope to quote, as was framed by someone, go on the road show beginning as early as late July probably, with other departments, like water and sewer and some of these other departments, to see what the impact of some of the thinking that they're putting forward is, how it's going to fly. And I think that's, the State House is going to let you comment on that.
Okay, on June 6th, I attended the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, and as we approved tonight, the Eagle Scout, Nolan Roberts, talked about his bicycle fix-it station and the different phases that are coming along. Phase 2A is open on the trail in Acton, and bits are going out this summer on Phase 2B. Phase 2C Junction Park is going to have a sign, "Stop and Walk", because there's been a lot of problems with some bicyclists kind of flying across these busy streets. Also, signs will be posted at schools, and the rules for the rail trail are going to be posted on the website. And we still don't have an official date from Mass DOT, but we're hoping it'll be this summer, because we're very close. Then on the 7th of June, I went to the Jazz Night Out at Trails End. And on the 8th, the Middlesex Jazz Festival, which was a beautiful day, very well attended, great turnout, great music. And attended with Susan and Linda the Melvin Memorial Dedication yesterday. And today I went to the Council on Aging. Five out of seven of the air conditioners are under repair over at the Harpicular until the end of June or the middle of July. So they're trying to get through as quickly as they can with it. They're 15 years old, and they were only supposed to last 10 years, so.
We brought in.
Right.
Okay.
Right, they brought in some more units.
Right, so, but that was a planned outage.
Right, it's a planned outage, right, right. They're doing maintenance on them, right.
While we're replacing them.
Yeah, yeah. So the new chair is going to be Carol Anne Hammond. And they're starting a decluttering or de-hording type support group, because this is a bigger problem than people think, it's 6% to 8% of the population. And it's going to be 12 weeks long, and 18 people are, we signed up for it, starts tomorrow. And then two events coming up are tomorrow night, the vision session, what you want your library to be in the next five years. That's going to be held at Fowler Library at 7:00 PM. And on the 26th is the public workshop for the Assabit River Pedestrian Bridge, where we're looking for input. It's going to tie right into our next meeting. That's going to be held at Hanger Cafe at 300 Baker Ave.
I attended the June 5th Natural Resources Commission meeting, and there was a lot of fairly standard business. The one continuous application is from Steve March for Kukka Road, and it is now in push, it was not finalized, they've been asked to come back on July 10th, and it continues to be a frustrating event for the, I think, for all the parties in that the known goal is separate from the stated goal of the application. And so it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a game of chess at this point.
Jane, what did you say, what road was that?
Kukka Road.
What was that?
Well, it's, it's a, it's, there's a small piece of it, but most of it's a paper road, and it's off of Main Street, between, in the section of Main Street between Route 2 and the South Bridge Roadhouse back, and it's largely wetlands. So these are non-conforming lots. It's a, you know, in a larger point, it gets to the, you know, we are getting type 4 buildable land, and so people are looking at lots of different options. And obviously, this is land that has been purchased by somebody that wants to do something with it, but that doesn't make it permanent, so. And other than that, I had a lot of out-of-town meetings, so I have to catch up with my friends at the HGC.
Thank you. I attended the Hugh Carrow Trust Committee. The significant item of business they had there was, as you may recall, we passed a senior tax relief measure a number of years ago now. And it's a, you know, a complicated arithmetic process that you go through for determining eligibility. On the other hand, Hugh Carrow Trust hands out a maximum of $325 a quarter to people who qualify taxably. And the question that they were trying to address was how these two mesh together. And Andrew provided just an enormous amount of analysis data for the committee to be able to look at who was receiving what, and it was very, very helpful to the committee. And they also asked Elaine to come in, Cecilia to come in and talk about it. So Andrew, Kudo, Shro, the one that did there, and I think they kind of have a path forward on that, so we'll see how that goes. As Linda alluded to, she and I met, went down to Boston to meet with Senator Barrett and Representative Correa about affordable housing, and we wanted to make sure that they were supportive of our home rule petitions and to learn a little bit more about what the process was like and what they thought about it. So it turns out that there are three bills, in some sense, stage it pending within the Commonwealth that would make the property tax transfer a statewide-enabled thing that towns could do. And counting ours, there are three home rule initiatives from various, I think, Silverville, I can't remember the third one, but. So these are all bills pending. They cautioned us, they suspected that there would be a significant lobbying effort opposed to these measures, but they were both committed to helping us with this. They made two suggestions to us. One was to maybe get together these towns and representatives that are interested in this and see if we can build a little coalition. So we got the information who were in the process of doing that. And then, as you may remember, I am a member of the Mass Municipal Association Fiscal Policy Committee, and they are going to have this on their agenda to discuss and hopefully recommend then to the state legislature and the governor that it be supported. But I think they were cautious that this is, you know, valid. But they're very supportive and very helpful to us. I also met with representatives of the business community in anticipation, I've been meeting with them off and on for a couple of years. They're in anticipation, talking about business vitality at our next meeting on July 1st, and so they know about that, and I wrote to them today, and they'll have a representative join us for that.
Is the chamber involved?
Chamber, I have reached out, I have heard about it.
And robbery? And Rotary?
I haven't reached out to Rotary. I'm pretty happy to have reached out to Chamber. I met with superintendents of the National Park, the Business Partnership. I'm happy to reach out to, I haven't heard back from the Chamber, but I've reached out to Rotary to do sort of what we do tonight, to hear what folks are about to say, get some their foot.
Also, the Cultural Council. I think they're very involved in economic vitality.
And the two chairs are...
I'll figure it out. A good friend over here will be able to tell me when he's on his computer.
Well, Jerry Wedge is one of the chairs.
Jerry and Carleen.
Carleen, that's me.
So I think that, I also met with Kate Hodges, was the chair of the Development Committee of the Umbrella and the director of the Umbrella, bringing us up today on how they're dealing with some issues with respect to noise and light. Very constructive meeting, they seem to be doing a lot.
I, if you're finished, I also forgot a meeting that I was at this weekend of our new congressional representative, Lori Trahan, and Tammy Gueva going through, it was a town, you know, a town hall style meeting intended to both update, Tammy was the moderator, but she was using this as an opportunity to show sort of the connection between what she was working on in the state and what Representative Trahan had taken to the Congress. The opioid crisis is one of the major ones, but also the delta between affordability, being able to live in the towns that folks are living in right now, and the business climate and the tax base, what brought up. Very, had to have.
Where was it?
It was an app that...
All right. Thank you all very much. The next and important, I have, I had municipal miscellaneous correspondence to report, but we already talked to Sheldon, and the other one we heard about was with Hanscom, so I don't exactly, I don't know, yeah, I don't know exactly what to do about the Hanscom one, but...
That's actually my committee, and I've written to him to say that the beginning of the middle school building committee is our first meeting.
And I'm going to Hatz next week, so I'll bring it up there.
What I will do is I'll reach out to the director, who is the local director at Mass Park. She's been pretty forthcoming in a number of cases before, I didn't get a chance to say more, but on some of these that he gave us with these flights, my recollection is that the towers closed from, I don't know exactly what time, to sometime in the morning. What that means is that there would not necessarily be any record of where these guys were going, so I don't, so we can...
And they can take off.
You can take off those procedures. I have a pilot's license. There's a procedure that you can use when you're at an uncontrolled airport. There's a common frequency that you can turn to as opposed to a tower frequency to alert traffic in the area that you're taxiing or leaving the airport on a particular day. Now, I don't remember when they're closed, but they're not open at about 3:00.
Yeah. 11 to 7 maybe?
Something, something, I don't know, but it wouldn't be surprising that they wouldn't know where some of these planes would go, because unless you're on the flight plan, all you need to do is get clearance to take off and tell them the general direction they're taking off in so that you can follow traffic. Anyway, so the next important order of business is the appointment of an interim town manager. So as you all know, we have a new town manager who's starting on August 12th, and we have a current town manager, Mr. Whalen, whose contract expires at the end of this month. So between the end of this month and then the new town manager shows up, we have to have a town manager. So Kate has vaguely served as a temporary town manager, and I will go ahead and appoint her as interim town manager beginning the 1st of the month through August 11th, assuming you're willing.
I believe it's actually...
Until August 11th?
June 29th, actually.
June 29th?
Yeah. Chris's last day officially, I think, is the 28th, and the contract that AB provided is the 29th.
We've included a copy of the contract.
Right.
And this, I would be happy to entertain a motion.
I move to appoint Kate Hodges as interim town manager effective June 29th, 2019 through August 11th, 2019, under the terms and conditions outlined in the proposed agreement as presented at the June 17th, 2019 Select Board Meeting.
Your second.
Second.
For discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. And thank you.
Thanks, you too. Good luck.
All right. So our next order of business is committee nominations, and Linda, I think I'll ask you to read those because I know you have a couple of additions.
Okay. I nominate Jim Terry of 368 College Road and Linda Miller of 300 Main Street to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Study Committee. Peter Lowett, 5, hmm, sorry, West Vale Drive to the Concord Housing Development Corporation. James Burns, 1515 Main Street, and Andrew Boardman, 110 Hill Press Road to the Nuclear Metals Starment Reuse Committee.
All right. Thank you. And then we have committee appointments.
Would you like me to continue with those?
You're doing such a good job, I think you should...
All right. Move to appoint Charles Parker of 105 Chestnut Street to the Middle School Building Committee for a term to expire upon completion of project. Stephen Ledoux of 89 Heespedros to Minuteman Regional Technical High School Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain.
From?
From, my, my, we're using it off, so I will abstain.
We will note for, we were on, speaking of that, it was four votes in favor and four others in. For all others on that list, Mr. Parker, I guess, is in and everyone else, five votes in favor.
Right.
Thank you. And committee reappointments.
Move to reappoint Brian Kramer of 820 Monument Street, Sarah Grimwood of 520 Lexington Road, Mark Hanson of 340 Holden Road, Christian Kruger of 85 Alcott Road, Joseph Levine of 29 Temple Road, Stanley Lux of 165 Indian Spring Road, and Sigman Russe of 36 Wood Street to the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee for terms to expire May 31, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will note that these reappointments were not necessary, but in action, we took in a previous meeting to extend the term of the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee. And I would also note that I'm delighted that we appointed Mr. Terry and Ms. Miller to the Trust Study Committee. We still need one additional citizen at large for that committee. So, I love you folks to look at what an opportunity. Now, I agree, you're trying to join the agenda.
Move to adjourn.
Your second. All those in favor? Thank you all very much for coming.